Convene the, well, I'll tell you what, what probably makes more sense is I'll, um, I'll defer to Supervisor McDonough, uh, because I don't know who's in the room, so, um.
Yeah, we're missing Patrice Lambert. I don't know if anyone has an update on Patrice.
I assumed she was gonna be there. I think she was in the lead on this, so. Has anybody heard from her?
I spoke with her yesterday. Fully aware of the meeting. She's probably just detained for some. Maybe that was it.
Mary, can you turn that on? I won't be able to hear anybody in the galley. Thank you. Well, I do, won't be able to hear anybody.
We'll just wait for her. She's in the elevator.
Hello, Patrice.
How are you? Sorry, I'm late. We were finished with the chamber and Mary Rose is on her way.
How far am I? Uh, is where?
Probably five minutes.
Do you need her to be present to begin? Is she sharing the presentation?
Just at the end for infections, and then when she comes, if she wants to interact in comments, she can, but at the beginning, not hoping that, I mean, first five minutes. There's something left here, but I just.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and convene the Dubuque County Board Supervisors 115 work session to discuss our coronavirus preparedness. And then, I understand we are streaming Facebook Live. So, Patrice, did you wish to be in?
Yes, and I think that, uh, I'm sorry.
I can't.
I'm going to send Patrice one time.
Hey, Mary, this is Jay Baker. I can't hear anything.
I think we have to turn the galley off.
It's very baffled.
So, I guess just a housekeeping matter. If you're addressing the board, I will need to have you move to a microphone. We're picking our, our hearing mechanism today. If we let people speak out in the galley, then I, I can hear you fine, but Supervisor Baker, who's joining us by phone, cannot. Um, and so we'll have to have individuals move to microphones to be able to be heard by me to participate.
As everyone knows, the information is quickly, rapidly changing, so we just updated this about 11 o'clock this morning. So, I sent down a new PowerPoint, so I apologize. But I guess I could, do you want me to start with a narrative component first?
Absolutely. What happened today?
I will do that. Well, today we did have our chamber, um, meeting, and we actually were able to secure most recent up-to-date information on that, which I will share, um, with this group as well. But I would like to just start by saying that, uh, the Dubuque County Health Department and the, um, City Health Department and the Visiting Nurse Association and our Dubuque County Emergency Management Agency, we all work so well together to plan for public health emergencies. And we have worked well together for sure, for the last 10 years, and then beyond that, when we were looking at a plan for the H1N1, um, event that we did have. Uh, we do have a joint plan with many annexes covering a variety of public health emergencies, including newly emerging diseases and outbreaks such as the coronavirus, which is now referred to as the COVID-19. This plan is updated periodically, and it was most recently updated in July of 2019. We also have education and training requirements, including our National Incident Management Training, which are our NIMs courses, for key staff to be qualified in working in a public health emergency situation, along with communication avenues for working with and informing our community partners, our healthcare providers, and those entities that are most affected by healthcare or public health emergencies. We do receive almost daily guidance on, um, the upcoming events with the Iowa Department of Public Health. We do receive guidance also on our plans, um, from the State Department through our Preparedness Grant. However, we have very limited funding support with that. But we do have direct access to IDPH 24 hours, seven days a week, and we're also part of the state and the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, which is the CDC Health Alert Network, which we refer to as the HON Alerts. The CDC does provide protocols, recommendations, guidance, and support for all states. In addition to public health emergencies, um, we all do collaborate with, um, the Dubuque County Emergency Management, and we're part of the component of the Dubuque County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan as well. So I guess I say that initially because, um, I want everyone to know that we do have a working team, and we meet on a regular basis, and we do a variety of things. And I have to apologize, the PowerPoint just went down. Okay. Sounds good. So, okay, we will start then with a PowerPoint. Okay, first of all, I'd like to make some introductions, um, because again, like I said, we do have our Dubuque County Healthcare Preparedness Coalition. And that consists of Tom Berger with our EMA, um, Mary Rose Corrigan with the city, Stacy Killian from the VNA, and then, uh, Tilly Frommold is our representative from Mercy One, and Karen Bassin is our, um, representative from Unity Point Finley Hospital. Our steering committee does meet on a regular basis. We were meeting once a month, but now we're meeting, um, Mary Rose, Stacy and I are meeting on a daily basis. And, um, we will probably increase our weekly visits with Tom, Karen and Tilly to probably twice a week, if, if needed, depending on, um, the changes that might occur in the state of Iowa. Please, I apologize for that. The Dubuque County Healthcare Preparedness Coalition, our steering committee, actually works with approximately 116 agencies in Dubuque County. We work with our schools, colleges, universities, our chamber, childcare homes and centers, hospitals, clinics, labs, long-term care, assisted living centers, EMS, firefighters, dispatch, law enforcement. Um, we did have for our December meeting, our coalition meeting, which meets quarter, um, quarterly, in December, we did do a drill with the long-term care and the assisted living centers on what would they do in their facilities if they were, um, impacted by influenza. And we just really feel, um, that that was very timely, not knowing even that the COVID would be approaching the state of Iowa back then, because we can't stress enough to have people plan, plan for your agencies, plan for your family. And then if you don't need that plan, that's wonderful, but then if you are dealing, um, dealt with a, a public health issue, you have your plan in place, and we feel as though it went one additional step because we were able to drill an influenza event. We also have webinars. Um, the Iowa Department of Public Health has been producing almost one webinar daily, if not more, for about the last two or three weeks. Um, they do notify us of what category or what agency that webinar will be pertinent to. So I do try and contact those groups at least a day ahead before the alerts come out, um, with that webinar, so that they can plan appropriately and have, um, the appropriate people in their agency watch that webinar. We do have HON Alerts, and again, those messages, we have what is called a blast list. So as appropriate with those HON Alerts, if it is dealing with schools only, then through our blast list, we get that message to them. If it's only dealing with, um, the healthcare providers, we get that message to them. So we do have some good vehicles in place for communication, working with various people and agencies throughout, um, the whole entire, um, county of Dubuque. Also, in that coalition, we do have community-based organizations. And I know that, um, Mary Rose had just recently worked with, um, the Holy Family updating some of their protocol as well. So we feel as though we are getting good information out to the appropriate people in the planning component. Okay, this is the Dubuque County Healthcare Coalition. We do have a statewide, um, coalition as well, and Tom and Tilly, Karen and I are the representatives from Dubuque County. We do meet on a monthly basis, although we're not getting any funding this year, but it sounds as though next year we will be getting funding. Um, we do, um, meet with five additional counties in 6A, that being Benton, Lynn, Jones, Delaware, Clayton, and then Dubuque is the sixth. But next year now, we are going to be combining 6A with 6B, so we will actually be looking at, um, 14 counties versus six counties in our coalition. And as, um, we have listed up there, in our county meetings, we look at different topics such as our community resilience. We update assessments, we review data, we update our plans, we engage partners to review, update, and adjust preparedness plans for any type of a pandemic, um, response. Working with our local public health departments, our hospitals, our EMS, our EMA, our fire, our law, um, law enforcement, and then those other appropriate agencies. The second in this group, we strengthen our incident management. We review our resource documentation in the EM Resource, which is a statewide web-based, um, format. We share and inform coalition on availability of resource sharing, considering our, um, continuity of continuing operation plan updates. We strengthen our information management. We manage send, receive information, um, vital to public healthcare, healthcare partners and the public. We strengthen our countermeasures and mitigation as needed. We strengthen our surge management. We review through exercises and drills our surge, um, surge management, and we consider our lessons that were learned in those exercises and drills, and how those might apply to a strained healthcare system. So we do have a good working relationship with Eastern Iowa through those counties as well. Okay, our public health preparedness. We, as it says, we're planning with our Dubuque County Preparedness Healthcare Coalition. We do our regional planning and drills. I know Tom has us very much actively involved with our airport drills as well. We have local drills. We update the multi-hazardous plan, and then we do do our ongoing, um, preparedness education. We do have plans in place as they are. We have a pandemic influenza plan. We have an environmental health plan. We have a risk communication plan. We have animals and disaster plan, because we know some people, if a tornado were to go through, or even with our COVID, if they are, um, confined to their home, we tell them to stay away from their animals for the 14 days, and we know some people look at the animals as being their family members. We have infectious animal disease plan, and then of course, we have our public health preparedness plan. And that was just updated, as I had said earlier, July of 2019. So we have done much planning, um, before even the COVID even surfaced, um, to our knowledge. And then the coronavirus itself. Um, basically, just a little bit of background. There are seven coronaviruses. Four are very, very common. Our health experts tell us that in those four that are common, all of us have probably been exposed to one of those, um, viruses in our lifetime. But we have been healthy enough that they have not attacked our immune system. And if people go in for blood work, just routine blood work or special blood work for influenza or whatever the case may be, one or maybe all four of these common coronaviruses might show up on the blood panel. But the ones that we're concerned about are the three rare coronaviruses. And people maybe remember the MERS COVID and the SARS COVID, and now we're dealing with our, um, COVID-19, because it's, uh, it appeared in 2019. Okay, the three, oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. The three rare, um, COVID viruses can be more severe pneumonia and life-threatening illnesses than those other four, and they will not appear on standard respiratory or blood illness panels. It was first identified in Wuhan, China, and now it is person-to-person, and it's spread in communities in different countries. And again, we can't stress enough that if you want to know what country is being affected or what the numbers are, go to credible sites. Go to the Iowa Department of Public Health COVID site, or go to the CDC COVID site. Because we know out in social media, especially on Facebook, there might be information that is given that is not true at all. So we really can't stress enough to people to go to, um, credible sites such as IDP and the CDC for, um, the most up-to-dated information. And again, we cannot stress enough how easy the preventive components can be, such as simple, effective, wash your hands. All you need are soap and water, and we really encourage people to do that, the friction with your hands for at least 20 seconds. Um, hand sanitizers are somewhat getting depleted out in the market, but, um, Iowa Department of Public Health assures us that soap and water are really our best means of washing, um, or preventing any virus that might be on your hand from getting into your nose, your mouth, or your eyes to possibly start any transmission if that virus were on your skin. So that's one of the easy, easy preventive steps. The other one is stay at home if you're ill. Don't come to work and expose others. And if you get to work and you're ill, go home. Don't, again, expose others, um, to that illness, regardless of what it is. And the third easy step is to always cough or sneeze, sneeze in your elbow. There's pretty much, um, well, I was going to say, there's, with the COVID, they believe that it is airborne. So they're looking at if someone does have the virus, and if they were to cough and sneeze, if there would be anyone in a six-foot radius, they have the potential of being exposed. So by containing your cough and sneeze into your elbow, um, such as this, then that virus is not getting out to even the person like Tom, who would be sitting here. It's being contained in your sleeve. So three simple, easy preventive steps, and they would be the same steps for influenza and everything else. Thank you. Okay, this is the COVID-19 cases in the United States, uh, by the date of the illness onset up to March 5th. We do need to share with you that the CDC, at noon, Monday through Friday, update the countries and they update the numbers. So again, on a daily basis, if you want to know beyond March 5th what those dates are, you can go to those sites. The Iowa Department of Public Health ups, is now going to be updating their site as well, Monday through Friday at noon. So again, two credible sources to get the accurate information. But nationwide, with, um, the cases that we have been informed, um, but again, it's ever-changing. It's probably changed since Mary Rose and I looked at the data this morning. But, um, worldwide, there's 105,000 confirmed cases of COVID. There's 3,500 deaths. In the United States, there's 336 positive COVID, um, virus, um, confirmed cases with 11 deaths. Um, in the state of Iowa, I'm sure everyone saw the press release last evening. We have had our first three confirmed cases in the state of Iowa. But also with the state of Iowa, um, the Public Health Department is monitoring currently 15 cases of people that are asymptomatic, meaning that they might have been, um, at a country that has been identified as a Level 3, 2, or 1, that they are now back in the States, um, but they're showing no signs or symptoms whatsoever. They have absolutely no one in quarantine that are showing the symptoms of COVID. But they have already quarantined for observation that are no longer in the quarantine, 40 residents in the state of Iowa. And as you know, last night, we had our first three positive COVID, um, cases in the state of Iowa. They have tested 26 additional people with negative results. They do, however, have eight individuals that, um, are pending, um, that they did go through the test, but we have not gotten the results as of yet. With the Iowa Department of Public Health, they are now able, or we are now able to do our testing in the state of Iowa, and that is at the hygienic lab. And once a positive, such as yesterday, came out, um, the Iowa Department of Public Health starts with the quarantine, even though the CDC has to do a final diagnosis. But, um, they believe that the hygienic lab test that is run, if it comes back positive, they're taking all steps to do the quarantine that is needed in that case. They're not waiting for the final result from the CDC. International travel notices. We've had numerous questions of people saying that, um, during spring break or because of a conference, they're, they're going to be doing some traveling, and they want to know, is it safe to travel to that country? Again, we come right back to say, look at the IDPH or the CDC, um, site. We do have, um, categories of Level 3, Level 2, and Level 1. China, Iran, um, Italy, Japan, and South, um, South Korea are identified on a certain level. Now with those levels, it means that, um, if you're a Level 3, traveling from a country that is identified as a Level 3, you then, and that might be on the next, no, I'll just share it anyway. I was gonna say it might be on the next slide. But if you're traveling into the United States, there are certain airports that you are going to be going through. And in that airport, then, there's going to be an assessment done on each of those individuals that have come back from a Level 3 country. If, um, if those people that are being assessed are starting to show signs and symptoms of an illness, then they're quarantined as, at a designated spot. But if they are assessed and they're showing no signs whatsoever, then that airport contacts, um, our Iowa Department of Public Health, if they're an Iowan residence, to, or a resident, to say that, okay, we've done our assessment on this person. They live in Iowa. They show no signs whatsoever, but they are returning from a level, um, identified country, so we are going to have them return to Iowa. So then, what Iowa Department of Public Health does is they notify that county public health agency to say, we know that this family or this individual has come from China, they showed no, or whatever country. They have shown no signs whatsoever, but we are going to put them in, um, more than likely, a medium-risk quarantine. They can be placed either in a high-risk, a medium-risk, or a low-risk quarantine. So then it's up to the local public health department in that county to follow up with that individual that has been informed that they need to be quarantined. So we work closely with the Visiting Nurse Association and our communicable disease nurses. What we would anticipate is that that communicable disease nurse or one of us would do a follow-up twice a day with that individual that is quarantined. All levels, the high-risk, medium-risk, and low-risk are required to take their temperature twice a day. And, um, the public health then follows up every day, twice a day, to see what those temperatures are. And then we also ask, do you have any signs or symptoms? Are you feeling ill, whatever the case may be, um, on a daily basis for those 14 days? Um, we do receive the standing quarantine orders from our medical director, Dr. Padada, Padati, from the Iowa Department of Public Health. And if there would be anything, if they would have an elevated temp or whatever the case may be, we would notify Iowa Department of Public Health immediately. We do tell the individuals that are in quarantine that if they're starting to experience, like, maybe they're thinking they're having a heart attack because they're stressed, or they're vomiting, or whatever the case may be, we do give them, um, a sheet of, um, announcements, or not announcements, but statements that they need to tell the hospital, and that if they're calling 911, they need to tell the dispatch. And I know Tom has worked with the dispatch, that when calls do come in, they too are clued in to what those, um, statements are, so that our EMS and our hospitals can be prepared when they do the transport or when they're taken into the hospital. So it's, um, quite the system, but we will do it if we have to do it. We've got our plan in place, and we feel quite comfortable that everything will go as the Iowa Department is requesting. So then states reporting the cases, okay, this, um, again, has been outdated. The Iowa Department of Public Health at about 11 this morning still didn't have Iowa identified, or the CDC, I'm sorry, did not have Iowa identified as a state. And again, I, you know, I tell you, go to the credible sources of IDPH and CDC on a daily basis, and you'll see the numbers that are changing. Again, the message is basically the same. Um, you'll be identified as a high-risk, medium-risk, low-risk quarantine for those 14 days. We do have, um, some countries such as Italy, South Korea, and Iran. If people are returning to the states from those three countries right now, we do, or the Iowa Department of Public Health is requesting a self-quarantine. Again, the same, um, requirements would apply, um, as a mandated quarantine is. So if they're returning from, let's say, Italy, then they are requested to be self-isolated, quarantined in their home for the 14 days. Um, with the, I forgot to mention, with the medium risk, if a person is identified as a medium risk for quarantine, they are able to step outside and do a walk or a jog, or it would be a limited amount of activity outside, but they are required to maintain that six-foot distance from any individual or from, um, any animal. from any individual or from any animal. But again, that's all explained to the family with the doctors' orders and quarantine orders that the public health agency would receive for an individual being quarantined. So, okay, this is the Iowa data that, this is exactly right from the Iowa Department of Public Health. Again, it's updated Monday through Friday now at noon. So, you can just see quickly asymptomatic, fifteen. Those symptomatic with symptoms and being tested, we have none. Completed the public health monitoring, meaning that they were quarantined at one time. There were forty, but now they have been released from that quarantine. The COVID testing, again, we had the three yesterday, but in the past, IDPH has ordered testing for twenty-six individuals, but they've come back negative. We do have those eight pending. And it has been a total of thirty-seven for the state of Iowa. Again, knowing that these numbers could have changed even from 11 o'clock this morning because this COVID is quickly, quickly changing.
Can I just stop you there for a minute? Mary Rose, have you had an opportunity to check the numbers since 11 o'clock this morning now that we know they're checking in at noon? Do we have up-to-date numbers?
Hi, Mary Rose Corrigan with the city of Dubuque. Yes, the numbers for Iowa are the same. I just checked them. And they're probably only gonna update them once a day, so.
Very good, thank you.
The testing at the hygienic lab, as I did just share, the state of Iowa is now able to do our own testing. Individual states now are able to do our own testing. There's been many stories out there, or not stories, but information about how many testing kits we actually have in the state of Iowa. And to our best understanding, we believe there are five hundred at this time.
So, how many do we have in Dubuque County?
None. It's only at the state hygienic lab.
So, if a person needs to be tested, they go to the state hygienic lab?
I'm sorry, yes. They could be tested locally and then sent to the hygienic lab. The hygienic lab would actually have the medium that they would put the sputum into the testing kit itself.
Do you believe people can be tested in our local hospitals?
I do. I think so. Okay, Mary Rose. I do.
So, any of our healthcare providers or hospitals will obtain the specimen from the person, but they all must be sent to Iowa City for the actual testing because they're the only ones that have the capability to do that. So, we'll all, healthcare providers locally are, they have all the information on what they need to do to get the right specimen from the person. And then, and that's true with a lot of our infectious diseases. We don't always test all of those locally. They, a lot of them have to be sent down there anyway. And they're on a daily or twice a daily?
Twice.
Two times a day courier that drives them down.
But until we have five hundred, we believe, at the state level, so we should be fine.
Yes. And I'm sorry, Anne, I thought you meant labs, the hospital labs. Would they be able to test? I think eventually, they probably will be, instead of just having the designated hygienic lab. But for right now, it's the hygienic lab that can actually do the testing.
I think folks want to know that if they or someone, they want to know that in the community, people can be tested and are being tested. That makes everyone, I think, feel safe and that there's a procedure in place to move that along to get the proper diagnosis. That's what I think was reassuring.
That's, yes.
And we have a work session that will begin again at 2:00. So, if we're still at the, what we need to know here to be at high level, I guess.
Okay. Do you want to just go through then quickly? We already touched on this, the high-risk, medium-risk, and low-risk, so I won't add any more to that. These are the airports that if people are flying to the, from those level-three, level-two countries, these are the airports that they're funneled into and that's where the assessment occurs. And again, if it's a resident of Iowa, that airport does inform the Iowa Department of Public Health. And then, the Iowa Department of Public Health goes to the county public health department. So, that communication is there. Isolation and quarantine, we've already talked about that. Emergency medical services. Tom, anything else to add with the dispatch, firefighters, EMS?
Just that the Iowa Department of Public Health came out with specific questions to ask. And Mark and his staff at the 911 Center have that. And they would relay that to emergency medical services. But it's pretty much, just like you said, the hand wash and the universal precautions are what the, you know, the medics and EMTs and first responders are doing at this point, as well as limiting exposure of how many people actually go in and have contact. You know, putting, if you have somebody suspected with it, they'll put a mask on the patient first, you know, instead of having six guys go in there. So, that's kind of some of the information that's coming down through the EMS to the services.
And so, that's our protocol here as well?
Right.
That's how you're explaining how we're operating?
Right, yeah.
Very good.
Oh, yeah, and we've got that on here as well. Thanks, Diane. This is just a screen to tell you that we have dealt with pandemic influences in our lifetime. Well, not too many in our lifetime. But again, we have our plan in place. Looking ahead, the risk to Iowa is still currently low. Potential for sustained communicable spread of the virus. We would, if we did see our numbers in Dubuque County increasing, we would activate our EOC.
Does that mean we have numbers in Dubuque County?
No. We have no cases in Dubuque.
We have no cases in Dubuque County, no one under anything that we're aware of?
No, correct. Nope, currently. It could change anytime. This is, again, just information that can be found on IDPH's website and CDC's. And we're all really trying to get these out on our websites as well and sharing this information. Because, again, simple, simple preventive measures that can be taken. And then, Diane, here's your component. Again, the Iowa Department of Public Health is available 24/7. Residents can call 211, but we did hear this morning that the Iowa Department of Public Health was having some malfunction or some problems with the 211. But they did assure us that by this afternoon, they thought that that line would be completely open. And again, we do have the credible sites on the screen. And again, Stacy, Mary Rose also have information on their websites with their organizations as well.
Very good. Does that conclude your presentation then?
Yes, thank you.
I know that we also have, we have our sheriff here. If you would like to address maybe what we're doing with regard to any response. I'm concerned about our jail inmates and our jail staff. Certainly, we have, you know, folks are in more immediate connection to each other there. And also, we have the administrator of our nursing home, Sunny Crest, here. So, I would appreciate hearing from both of you. If you could just bring us up to date on anything. We need to be aware about your preparations with Dubuque County facilities.
As far as the jail's concerned, you know, right now, it's pretty much business as usual. We go through these things, I guess, unfortunately, regularly. You know, we'll get, people come in with the flu. Unfortunately, we're in a confined area, so when one person brings it in, they have a tendency to infect several other people. At this time, we don't really have any specific threat. We don't have anybody under any kind of care, as far as I know, or it's being monitored for it. So, I guess we're keeping our fingers crossed and hoping that if we do have any kind of exposure, it's limited and we can hopefully respond as quickly as possible, get the inmates isolated to individual cells and.
As best we can.
As much as we can, yeah. And keep away from the general population, so.
Good. Chris, would you mind, please?
Good afternoon. At Sunny Crest Manor, I am happy to say we have not had any flu. But we have started our preparations to become prepared for if, in fact, we do have a coronavirus case. We've identified an isolation room. We've identified some supplies that we need to ramp up on our par levels. We've identified an isolation area that we can set aside for people with coronavirus. We've identified some staff that can be moved from the business office and work in dietary or work in housekeeping if those areas are void of staff. So, we have a team in place to go through. We actually pulled our 2012 plan out and are going through it and making sure that it's adjusted for this particular virus, so.
Tom, is there anything that you wanted to add from emergency management?
Just when we talk about this whole problem or with the coronavirus, you know, it's a team effort that's working on it. You seen up there that we did have the EOC, Emergency Operations Center. If we start getting our cases here, when we start getting the cases in Dubuque County, we will activate that to some limit, which will bring in all of our elected officials or, you know, to get that information out. It might be some type of a virtual EOC. But that's where we'll try to get all the information in and get our operations plan on exactly what we need to do. This is a little different than we normally deal with in natural disasters because it's a more of a top-down disaster where we're getting our information from the CDC and the Iowa Department of Public Health more so than what's going on, starting at the local level. So, we really just have that information sharing so everybody knows what's going on. And again, our concern is not just, you know, the city of Dubuque and the county, but we also have all the small communities that we need to worry about and work with too. So, countywide, as well as our region. So, I just wanted to clarify that on the EOC. Our core group will be working together, meeting, and then deciding when we're gonna have to go to that next phase, you know, whether it's to monitor or if it's to respond to some type of an event.
Very good. And Supervisor Baker, I know you're joining us by phone and I just wanted to make a general comment that I think we have nearly every member of our Board of Health here as well. And so, I appreciate your attendance today as well. And I don't know if any of you have other knowledge that you wish to share. We certainly have professionals working, volunteering their time on the Board of Health as well.
Yeah, this is Supervisor Baker. And I, I'm sure you'll all be pleased when I tell you that I am following protocol and all the suggestions. I was diagnosed with influenza A. And so, I did not come to work and didn't come to work Friday when I wasn't feeling well. And I do have a question that I think maybe there's a misunderstanding out there about, they talk about test kits and that type of thing. Is the test kits, are they at a certain location in Iowa? Because I thought, my doctor told me it was Des Moines and I heard somebody else say Iowa City.
Patrice, can you maybe answer the question? Go to the podium, thank you.
Dave, this is Patrice. And we actually have two hygienic labs in the state of Iowa. I apologize. We have one in Ankeny, which is right outside of Des Moines. And then, we have one down in Iowa City. So, I don't know if they have divided those five hundred between the two sites or not, but we usually just refer to it as a hygienic lab and not citing the location. So, your physician could be correct, yes.
Thank you for that. And then, just so the average person might know this or understand it, that there would be, like, either a swab or whatever the proper medical term would be, could be done at a local, by a local provider. And then, that gets forwarded to the hygienic lab for testing, which is where the testing kit would come into place?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And then, even if it comes back as a presumptive positive, the CDC currently is making that final diagnosis. But yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, I just wanted that to be clarified. Thank you.
Supervisor Wickham, any questions?
Well, my big question would be, as of this moment, you know, we don't have any cases, but as you prepare, what are additional resources or opportunities or funding you would need from the board or other agencies? This would include the city and others as well?
Currently, one of our priorities right now that we're looking at are basically supplies because we have been getting some concerns that some places of employment or long-term care or whatever, they're getting back-ordered on some of their supplies. But unfortunately, it would be out of our control and your control if factories can't be producing that. But we do have a system in place for actually every county through the state of Iowa. We are required on a weekly basis to submit our inventory to IDPH. They're entering it into this EM resource. This data formed based with the Iowa Department of Public Health. We have to list how many N95 masks we have, how many surgical masks, how many isolation gowns, whatever the case may be. And then, if we start seeing individual counties that have to provide supplies to long-term cares, nursing homes, schools, whatever the case may be, the Iowa Department of Public Health is asking us to work with our inventory that we have in place. If we do not have an inventory in place or if we deplete it, then we work through Tom. And Tom, do you want to explain the request to IDPH?
How it'll happen, that'll be similar to a disaster. Once we overwhelm our local system and resources, then we enter it into what they call Web EOC, which is an internet-based tracking system. Our request would go up to the State Emergency Operations Center. And then, they would look at our situation along with all the other ninety-nine counties and then see if they can get us resources that we can't find. And that would go for anything requesting through the state.
But we have adequate supplies at this time. And what you're explaining is we have a system in place and a plan in place to request others if we need them.
Correct.
Very good.
So, that would be, back to your question, Jay, supplies in the future might be a request that we would be coming to you. But we do know that companies are depleting their own supplies as well. But we are, like I said, Mary Rose, Stacy, and I meet on a daily basis. And now, with Tom, Stacy, Karen, and Tilly, we are going to be increasing our weekly visits to possibly twice a week. So, we will be evaluating our situation on a daily basis. And I will be contacting you if there, you know, if there would be something that you could help us with in return. But right now, we are staying status quo. Our communication has been wonderful. I mean, we are sharing whatever we can with each other. And we're just really trying to get the message out to the public that there's simple, easy preventive steps to take. That being staying at home when you're ill, coughing in your sleeve, and washing your hands with soap and water frequently.
Good.
One of the things you'll have to consider as supervisors is, you know, as people, the IDPH is telling businesses and, you know, the county be like a business about the requirements for people staying at home so there's not punitive damages for them to stay home and be sick. As well as if we get ramped up to full EOC operations, we might need some staff assistance out there if it's in the Emergency Operations Center. As far as, might be if, you know, Denise would have somebody from the auditor's office that she could free up, you know, to come out and work, you know, that had know the county systems and just help as a support person is probably be, you know, where we would go, as we would do with a major disaster like a tornado or whatever. So, that'd be something we'd be looking at in the future when we're to that point where we'd be in the Emergency Operations Center, you know, every day.
Right. And I think maybe on a more intimate. And I think maybe on a more, on a more intimate county, as you say, business or employer perspective, our HR um director is not able to join us this afternoon. Um she's actually home ill as well, but um so that's where we are. I, I think we'll, you know, those are good points of concern. And of course, I'm sure you're reaching out to Dawn Sherman about that and um letting her know what we need to do as a, to be a good employer ourselves.
The question I'd have is I know that they had appropriated funds at the federal level. Has there been any discussion of how those may come down to the local level, level as needed? Has anyone contacted you related to that?
No. Um the only message that we have been given is that the Iowa Department of Public Health will be in close contact with those counties that it might be affecting. But again, Jay, that could change tomorrow with whatever the guidelines are, but right now, that's what we are being told.
Thank you.
Supervisor Baker, any other questions?
Yes, I had a question for uh Cheese, excuse me, for Tom Burger and for uh Patrice. So you have your um, you know, your budgets have been submitted. Um and uh, you know, this is obviously out of the ordinary. We have cases almost virtually next door. Uh and, you know, you draw eighty-mile ring around uh Dubuque County and, and there's three cases, right, Johnson County? Would, would it be prudent for us to um make possible, make preparations for perhaps outside um expertise in case it's needed? Uh uh somebody from the um, you know, uh healthcare community or whatever that uh if you need the help that we could bring on board as a consultant, someone to help? Because this is um, you know, this could be outside of uh normal. I think it kind of gets to what Supervisor Wickham was, was, was asking. Do, do you need help or may you need additional help? And uh I, I want to make sure that that wasn't uh, you know, I, I, that, that was thoroughly considered and, and uh, uh, you know, if it's, uh, you know, because we've had, you know, we've gone from uh people uh on TV telling people it's okay to go to work to uh, you know, uh we know that's not the right thing, by the way. But uh, you know, so what if this becomes a, uh, you know, a, a, a big deal? Uh we'd have live cases in Dubuque County. Very possible that we are. Uh what if it becomes a uh, you know, a crisis in, in Dubuque County? Are, you know, sh- should we prepare for additional staff, I guess, is what I'm asking? And that could be contracted uh or uh whatever. So um I, I don't know if, I don't want to speak for Supervisor Wickham, but I, I, I think it goes towards his question.
Well, currently, I can share that um we work closely with our state epidemiologist. Um I'm on daily conversation with him as well as our medical director from IDPH, which we all have a correspondence at least once a day from Dr. Padati as well. Uh we do have our hospitals that have infectious dis- um prevention staff. And um when you're saying, you know, different scenarios, I could also see, like Mary Rose had just mentioned, that um if we were to have an influx of people that were re- confined to a quarantine. Stacy is with the VNA. We do utilize our communicable disease nurses um to do the monitoring of that quarantine. So there might be a possibility, um again, for us, it's, it's, right now, it's better to work with the staff that we have in place because we know what we're do- I mean, we've been working together. But if we were to get an influx of quarantine, we might see that some of um those communicable disease nurses are working overtime and that would deplete Stacy's budget that we might be right back here asking for additional dollars for those communicable diseases to monitor those people that are in quarantine. So we definitely will be looking at different scenarios. Even tomorrow, we have um a meeting already arranged just to discuss what could be those potential situations that we could possibly come back and request um additional means of staff or else dollars for those. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you both. And I should have called the Supervisor Wickham. I'm sorry.
You're here. We're happy.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. It's good that you're talking about it. It's good that you're talking about. Keep talking about it at your meetings, you know, and see, because, you know, you might, might take a little while to shop around.
I think we'll just um go ahead and we'll be moving on. We have a two o'clock work session um that I think many of the people in the room are present for, which is um um Hillcrest, Rep.